I don't know your microphones on.
All right, we're live.
Am I close enough or too close?
There you go. Okay. How's it now? Testing, one, two, three. Okay. I don't get any feedback from the mic, so I was doing this and blowing his ears out last week. Okay, meeting is called to order. Shall we have any pledges?
Do you like a roll call first?
Susan, would you lead us? Oh, pardon me, we need that first? Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Haney. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wirick.
Here.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Commissioner Conrad.
Here.
Commissioner Golden.
Here.
Commissioner Balderman.
Here.
Commissioner Byrne. Vice Chair Harmon.
Here.
Chair Addison.
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum. Susan, will you do the honors?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any presentations? Mr. Manager, do you know of any?
None scheduled that I'm aware of, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we will go to discussion items, and it has Committee Chairs' update. Acquisition Committee, City Gallery, who does those?
Well, I would like to initiate the discussion of these items, if I may, by, first of all, saying that the Arts Commission continues to be grateful for the very strong support from the City Council. Our view, I think, is shared by the City Council that the arts are an integral part of this community, and that we get that sort of support from the council is very gratifying to us. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Linda Harmon, who is one of our commissioners who's responsible not only for acquisitions and the City Gallery, but also has been largely instrumental in one of our new initiatives, which is going forward very strongly, and that is a active liaison and relationship with the City Museum. So having said that, Linda, if you would, please.
Okay. I'm hoping everybody's already familiar with it, but just to give you a little background, if you're not, the museum project came about over the last year. We all worked together, and we had a great relationship with the museum people. We found here at the City Hall that we were having problems with storage. We have this wonderful collection that we're working on building, and we had no proper place to store it, no temperature controls, and it was a lot of responsibility that there's no really anybody in place to take care of that. And the museum has a nice collection on their own, and they have access to nice storage. And we thought it was kind of a no-brainer that we'd be both working on it and not working together. So over the last year, we've worked out a plan, and it's operating very well. One of the things we like the most about it is everything is very well documented. They have a great program there that they use, Past Perfect, that catalogs everything, and everything will be online. We'll know exactly where it is, we'll know what size it is, what providence comes with the artwork. And also, as we're building our collections, both the museum and the city, we'll know where we're weak, where we're strong. It just makes a lot of sense. And also, we'll be able to work on joint projects together, which we're really excited about. So that's all happening. We had our first exhibit, which was the Art City Exhibit? City Art City? Yeah, Art City. For a minute, I didn't think that sounded right. It was very well received. I think the artists are very pleased. I think we had a lot of people turn up we didn't realize would turn up, a few that we missed, but most everybody was there. How many went through the opening? Yeah? I went. Anyway, we think it's really going to be a strong program for us, and we can grow together on it, especially the part about the acquisitions, because in this town where art is so important, it's good to be working together on a project. And the museum staff is awesome. They've been very helpful, and we've kind of put both of our, all of our talents together so that I think it'll work great going forward. And it's great PR for the city and the museum both, because we can cross, I hate to say "merchandising," publicize events. Like, right now, we have a joint exhibit bringing over some of the museum pieces that are over here, and some of our art will be always on display over at the museum. So if you ever walk into our museum, there will be a representation of the City Collection. So that's the big thing that I've been working on with a lot of help from people like Roger over the last year. I'm also, like, we were talking about, I'm also the Acquisition Committee, and I really want to thank the City Council for reinstating our budget for that several years ago. I know there were many years that we just couldn't afford it, you know, and we're so thankful that we're being able to support the arts in Ojai. We have marvelous artists in this town, and be able to really support them and purchase work is awesome. I'm only hoping that we'll get more and more civic participation with the program, so I couldn't be happier. I'm very, very happy with it. I guess that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Two things to highlight, I think, here, and one of which is that the storage of the artwork of the City Collection, which is, at this point, I think approximately 70 pieces, as I recall, and some truly remarkable work that's been collected over the years, now it is at the museum, it's a climate-controlled, proper storage facility, and that's really critical. The other thing that Linda mentioned is that we're going to continue to have representation of the City Gallery collection in the museum, and in that sense, the public will be more and more aware, I think, of the fact that the city does have this remarkable collection.
Okay. Can I ask a question while we're on this? How do you accept donations of art? Or is that an issue? Is that a...
It is an issue, and we actually have, now have a procedure for donations, because we can't obviously accept everything. We have certain criteria that have to be met, and there's actually, we actually have a, I have a copy of it, a form that we ask people to fill out if they're interested in donating, so.
Mayor Johnston, are you going to be working with the museum staff on a, as we move into the budget season, on a, you know, responsible and appropriate support for this activity, for the storage of the City Art Collection at the museum? I would assume that there's some cost involved in part of the museum, and are, were you going to be working with them on a budget proposal, or...
It's sort of a work in process.
I was just hoping that you were.
Yeah. We did have a budget for this last show. We're just in the processing, the museum went ahead and paid for everything, and then we're invoicing according to whose, like, we had a lot of work reframed for this show. And part of it was city art, and part of it was museum art, so we were very careful about separating that out. We haven't, I have to get the number of the invoice, the museum just got me their copy, so I will be doing that.
Just be nice to budget.
But going forward, I'm hoping we will be able to work something out. We actually have our own acquisitions budget.
Right.
And we have a, we're kind of working on that now to see how that's going to play out. City Gallery's going to change a little bit. Roger, are you going to speak to that when you come talk about City Gallery? Yes?
I thought you were talking about City Gallery.
Oh, you want me to? Well, you're the one that's been in charge for a long time.
I'm just glad it's...
Yeah, yeah. Because before, we would mount shows, what, every month and a half, two months?
Every two months.
Every two months.
Then we went to quarterly.
Yeah. So it's kind of in transition now, what we're going to do with that space, and we'll have more energy to put into other things if we, we're kind of figuring it out, and the budget is part of that, so we are working on it. Yeah. It's a long answer to a short question, sorry.
And I think that's a direct segue to the Gallery Committee, the City Gallery Committee, and Roger Conrad has been in charge of that, and hugely instrumental, not only in that, but at the museum, in providing really professional appreciation of the nature of the space and what's needed. For example, over the past couple of years, Roger is the one who's led the way towards installing new and contemporary and appropriate lighting in the City Gallery. So that has been an important initiative that he's been involved in. So Roger, if you would like to carry on.
Okay. I think we've covered most of the things. The show that's up now is a joint show between museum artifacts as well as the municipal collection. And the museum just recently acquired a new Beethoven print that is quite effective. We've got it framed just recently, and we'll have that on display very shortly. Like, the municipal collection has a sculpture piece of Beethoven's. Now we have a print, and we would love to get some of her original drawings, or I'd love to get some of her figurines once we get money set aside to doing that. But the significant thing about this is that both the museum is acquiring things and the city's acquiring things, and we're putting these collections together, and that's really kind of an exciting thing with it. And we also will be having the Mentor Show that we have here, once a year, for people and from the Mentor Program, which you'll be hearing more about that coming up. And then we're also featuring, in conjunction with the museum, the museum has a major show every year for the Ojai Studio Artists, and we'll also be having the scholarship students presented here, so that, like before, we would have maybe easels in the courtyard of the museum and show the student work, but here, we're actually able to use the gallery to present the work in a really professional environment. And for artists, this is really very important to have a place where they can display their work, learn how to do it, learn the procedures that you go through to get into gallery shows and things like that, so.
Roger brought up the subject of the Mentor Program. We didn't list that on the agenda, but I think I could go forward and say that that is a continuing and strong program of ours. We'll be entering our fifth year this summer with a program where we pair an artist with a student, the artist having applied for the program, and similarly, the student's applying. And at the end of their summer commitment to each other, we will be having a show here in the City Gallery. This past year, for the first time, we had a glitch in the program, and that is that two of the students, one of them moved out of town and the other simply bailed. So instead of five, we only had three this past year. So that, I think, has made us aware of the fact that perhaps our selection of the students need to add some additional questions. Is your family planning to move might be one of those questions. But that continues to be a very strong program, and it ties in really well with the effort that we've made, I think successfully, to connect with the Ojai Studio Artists, with the museum, and to create these reinforcing synergies that are, I think, enlarging the capability of what the Art Commission can do within the community. I think, having said that, we can move to what is another new initiative on the part of the Ojai Arts Commission. A year or so ago, we looked at our Education Committee, and we created a new project. And Bobby Balderman, on our commission, has been in charge of that and has put in an enormous amount of work, very successfully, to move the project forward. So I'm going to let Bobby describe the project and let you know where we are on that.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, this is a very exciting project. What we're hoping to do is have a series of books on various art forms in the Ojai Valley, and we're starting with architecture. And who knows what the next one will be? Could be sculpture, you know, and so on and so forth. What we had to do was identify, first we had to identify what architecture will be included in this book. So just to give you a little background, we actually went to, not only the Historic Commission, but we went to the Architects of Ojai and polled them to find out what properties they recommended for this book. So we got a lot of input with, from some people who really know Ojai and know the history of Ojai. It wasn't just an arbitrary thing that we drive down the street and go, oh, I like that house, you know? So there is some method to our madness. Once we identified the properties, of course, the next step was to come up with a prototype for this book. What is it going to look like? So we've put together a really great team, we think. Carlos Grasso, I don't know if you all know him, he's a local artist and designer, is going to be the designer of the book, and I just thought I'd do a little show and tell and kind of gloat a little bit on what we've got so far. Pardon me?
We get to see it.
Well, this is, this is the cover. I'll pass this around. This is what the cover will basically look like.
Is it a mock-up?
It's a mock-up. This is a mock-up. This is just a mock-up. And then, this is one interior spread.
Nice.
And some of the photos will be black and white, because they're archival, some of them will be color. And we're hoping that we can get, it would be great if we can get up to 15 properties and then maybe do about four pages on each property with some intro to the history of the architecture in Ojai. Then the next thing we had to do, of course, is get permission or get actual images on the properties. So this is part of, when Roger was talking about, I've put in a lot of hours. I've even been down to UCLA at their archives and ended up at the Getty and have been able to collect, right now, I think I've got nine properties that I have images on and two that are pending approval of the owner, where I actually have the images, but I, the photographer gave us permission. So that's pretty good, considering that's 11 out of 15 that we were, you know, that was our goal. So now we have to contact the last few in our list and hope that they give us permission. Then whoever does not have existing images in their archive, what we're hoping to do is bring in Donna Granata, and she has some youth that she wants to work with on this project, and they'll go out and actually shoot architectural photography of these properties. And then we're really lucky, because Craig Walker, who you probably all know, Craig Walker is going to be writing this, and Mark Lewis will be editing it. So we've put together quite a, to me, quite a A-team, you know? I'm really excited about it. And as far as timeline and budget, we, I can't thank you enough for the money that you gave us for this year to help move this project along, and that is certainly helping to defray the expenses. Now, next year, we're going to have some other expenses in the print, the actual printing of the piece, and hopefully, we'll be able to look forward to more budget to cover that. But we've been able to do this, I think, on an amazingly tight budget. I have, my background is I was a graphic designer and had a marketing company, so I know what it costs to produce something like this, and I am duly impressed with how fair people have been as far as what they're charging us to do the work that they're doing. The final thing is, Michael mentioned the Mentor Program. What we're hoping, we certainly hope that there's proceeds from this book, and with those proceeds, we'd like the money to go towards our Mentor Program that is sponsored by the Art Commission. So we've done a lot of penciling out on the numbers, and it looks quite possible, so I think we're moving along as far as timeline. Wouldn't we all love it by Ojai Day to celebrate the 100th years of...
(inaudible).
Yeah, but, you know, as things move. I have spoken recently with Craig, and he plans on starting the writing within the month, within the next few weeks. However, he has to know what properties he's writing about, so that onus is on me to really get the last four on board. And once we're clear on who and where and what, he'll start his writing, and it's quite possible, but no promises. Anyway, any questions?
One quick one. Are you able to be sort of inclusive and include maybe that are just, you know, outside the city limits, but in the Ojai sphere of influence, for example? Are you, in other words, are we looking at the valley as a whole or just in the city limits?
We pretty much stayed within the city.
I wouldn't object if, you know, there was in the sphere of influence personally. Just letting you know.
Yeah. Well, actually, you know what? I just thought of that. Miners Oaks isn't part of the city.
It's part of our sphere of influence.
It is. Okay, so, yes, we have included...
That's good.
We have included...
I appreciate that.
There is a property...
Should help with sales, too.
Yeah, we've got two properties that are in Miners Oaks, so, yes.
We're all one community, basically.
And Kritonas included, so, you know, and that's not in the city, so actually, we do, we did.
Can I add something to what Bobby said?
Please.
I just wanted to say, I really, I also think it's such a good idea, when we first started talking about it, I didn't really think about it this way, but a lot of people really don't realize how much architecture is in art, and it's like the largest piece of art you'll ever have is the home you live in. So I just think it's kind of a neat beginning for us on our books.
Well, and if I can add something to that, this has been quite educational for me to find out about the architecture of Ojai. And what I discovered is we have a lot of property that has been designed by very well-known, internationally-known architects, so like Neutra, Green &amp; Green, you know, we've, yeah, you know, yeah, Mead &amp; Requa. It goes on and on and on. So these aren't just, you know, we decided purposely and actually had some advice from those architects in Ojai to not include present-day architecture or properties. These are all historical.
And it's worth pointing out again that this is part of our liaison with the museum, with Craig and Mark Lewis being closely affiliated with the museum. It's a really, really nice bonding with them as well on this project.
Thank you, Chair Addison. Just a quick comment in regards to the book and the proceeds and the commission hoping to be able to program that funding back in. We just recommend that when the commission puts its budget request together and brings that forward to council, that that be part of the budget request, that the commission then be able to accept that revenue that comes in and put it into its budget. That way, we have council blessing for that, and we know where those money should be going. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. I want to turn to Roger again. Roger, for a number of years, has been the chair of the Grants Committee, and it's a model program in every respect. I would urge you, if you're interested, to just take a quick look at the website and see the detailed instructions that are available for those who wish to apply for grants to the Arts Commission, and to become aware of the really sophisticated process that Roger has developed. And Roger, if you could explain that as a part of your report, so that people get a full sense of the fact that this isn't money that's just quickly given out because someone scribbled something on a piece of paper. It's a lot more demanding than that, and as a result, the quality of the grants, I think, is really very, very high. Roger?
Okay. One thing I'd like to start, that we were very grateful to get $25,000 this year to work with, and it was the first time that we were able to fund fully all the grants that we had on. And one of the important aspects of the grant program is that we also train people how to write grants. We have a workshop that we convene every year, very soon after we advertise, that we do have the grants, and it's many times first-time people that have never written art grants before, and so it's really important to help them to do that. We also insist on a 50/50, at least, matching funds, so this also encourages people to go out and learn how to raise funds for their various projects. And we primarily like to think of the grant program as seed money to start major grant projects or things that would benefit the city in many particular ways. And I think I also mentioned that many times we have first-time people that are coming. And we also give grants to organizations as well as individuals, so it's a very important part of that. This year, we have a new grant by Focus to the Masters. You've already heard Donna Granata mentioned in being involved with the book, but she also at Focus to the Masters, where she keeps an archive of all the artists in Ventura County, actually, it's a countywide thing. But she started this program where she's going to be teaching about artists in the schools, and dealing with people like John Knaba, Linda Taylor, Susan Stensmullin-Aiman, Otto Hino, Ted Gahl, Gail Childress, and RTK Studios. Basically, there'll be presentations of all these artists given at the local schools to help present it. And another aspect that we're doing with a lot of the grants in that many of the schools have had to cut back on their art programs, and so we're supplementing things in some small way to try to fill the gap that's done with that. So this is one of the programs that does it. Another similar program that's helping is the Lineage Dance Company, who is basically bringing dance programs into Nordoff High School. And Nordoff High School has gotten previous grants from us, and each time, they get a new dance company to come in, so that it's really like getting professional people into the school. We've also been a longtime supporter of the Ojai Community Chorus, and this is an organization that has both originally started with seniors, but they've opened it up to give musical and choral training to a full spectrum of youths and seniors, and they have two concerts each year, and so we've been helping that particular program. Also, we're supporting the Ojai Film Society, and they have a yearly youth program where youth people produce the films. We help pay for publicity for people coming to that. We also provide grant money for prizes for the student works, and that's very good. Another one is Ojai Youth Entertainment Studio, and they have various drama and musical programs. What we do is our grant money helps subsidize people that can't afford to get into the arts program for that. We also have a new program that Brian Berman has been involved with as an individual. Last year, we gave him a small grant, which part of what happened was to have us become, make Ojai an international city for peace. And this year, they're going to be doing numbers in the Fourth of July Parade, and then also supporting and having a whole day of performances, which will be everything from visual arts, performance arts, music, spoken word, and all this, an entire day, which is September 21st, which is also recognized by the United Nations. So it'll be quite a diverse program. And I think that's basically what we're doing this year, and we're hoping for your support next year to be able to continue this.
Thank you, Roger. One other program for us to present, and this is one that was, it was not in abeyance, but during the recession, it was certainly severely limited, and that is the Public Art Program. And the Public Art Program, as council members know, is determined by a fee that is called upon for developers when they reach a certain level of cost. And there wasn't much going on during the recession, but now that the economy has improved, there has been virtually an explosion, one might almost say, of development, and that in turn has led to a great increase of public art activity. And happily, we have a chair of that committee who's devoted herself to it, an extraordinary number of hours, and has really made this her mission, I think, and that is Christine Golden. So Christine, if you would speak about public art at this point, please.
Thank you, Michael, for those kind words.
Thank you, Michael, for those kind words. And I also want to thank City Council for this opportunity to speak directly to you. And I'll start with some more thanks, because I'd like to thank the two other members of the Public Art Committee, and that's Michael Addison and Roger Conrad. And no one person can work on this sort of endeavor alone, so there's been a tremendous lot of help as well from Amber Young, who is sitting over there and is the staff liaison to the Arts Commission for Public Art. And poor Amber, she has to deal with emails and questions and all kinds of things for me, from me, because unlike any of the other Art Commission committees, the Public Art Committee interferes, or intersects, maybe is a better word. I think sometimes it's seen as interfere, but intersects with...
Say "interlaces with."
Okay. With several city programs, a community development department, for example. And I will mention that I've had meetings with both Amber and Kathleen Wold, as we've gone through the public art ordinance that have been productive and extremely helpful. So this committee of the Arts Commission requires attention and time from city staff, and I'm grateful for the attention that they give it, and I wanted to be able to say that. And I also would like to mention, because it was brought to my attention, that City Council is discussing who is going to be assigned to how many commissions for attendance at our meetings, and I hope that all of you will at least come once to an Arts Commission meeting, and you won't be, by the virtue of the way you do that, somebody won't end up showing up to see what it is we do once a month, and that's especially true, Mayor Johnson, for you, and councilperson Francina. And that's especially true, Mayor Johnson, for you, and councilperson Francina, for you. I hope I see you at those meetings. We really like it when we have someone from City Council at our meetings.
Wait a minute. Don't we have somebody always?
No, we didn't have anyone last time. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Things happen to people. You know, colds and whatever. But moving right along, I also want to mention that the Public Art Committee of the Arts Commission is the only body in the city of Ojai that deals with public art. We have organizations throughout the valley and throughout the city that deal with other forms, drama, music, you name it. We're just jumping. But really, public art falls here on us. And so, that's one of the many reasons why, when I was assigned the task of becoming the chair of this committee, that I really thought I had to really sink my teeth into it and to know what I was doing and to make sure that the ordinance that was put into place in 2003 or '12, 2012, would be strong and would stay strong. We have some outstanding matters that we're looking into. One of those, which we have brought up at this meeting for multiple years in a row, is the condition of a piece of public art at Bryant Circle, which is called Reflections of Ojai. And we're in the process of communicating to city. We haven't done this yet. We're in the get it all together stage. A recommendation as to what to do in regards to the damage to that particular public art project. So, we're going to move forward on that and you'll be hearing from us as to what we recommend should be done with that. Another former public art project that we're looking at, again, in terms of having to perhaps renegotiate and relook at what's going on, is the Trimpin Arch. The Trimpin Arch is a sound arch. It's supposed to sound. And there's repeated vandalism to the mechanism. And as a result of that, most of the time, if not all of the time, the arch is not operational. So, staff has done a wonderful job of contacting Trimpin, Mr. Trimpin, to find out just exactly what we could do to modify the device and make it so it's vandal proof. So, this is another ongoing concern that the Public Art Committee is working on. Our current projects are, we can't really call it Phase Two of the Libby Park Playground Installation, which I know many of you are familiar with, the lizard and the ladybug and the archway that were laid and the ribbon cutting. It was absolutely fantastic. Well, there's another piece that belongs as part of that project and which was part of the RFP, the Request for Proposal. And that's an art wall, an interchangeable art wall that is meant to display the artwork of the students and the youngsters and the young people here in Ojai. And we have to have a meeting in order to figure out exactly what we're going to do to configure this wall in a way that will be safe for all the people that use the park. So, that's on our table, on our plate. There are a few other proposed developments around town that we're keeping our eye on. And we're going to see what happens at the Planning Commission with those projects. And now, we hope that the Planning Commission will note that on their checklist of what needs to be done when developers are going through the process of getting their permit is that they have put into motion the public art process, which means that they have had a meeting with what is called Kappa, the Committee to Approve Public Art. And when I worked with Amber and Kathleen Wald, we now have on top of the application that a developer would get when they walk in the door, we now have, in screaming yellow, a wonderful little statement that alerts a developer to the fact that Ojai has, that we're proud that Ojai has a public art program. And then, we invite the developer to have a meeting with the staff liaison, Amber and myself, so that we can talk to them and help them see that this is not at all a burden. In fact, it's an enhancement to what they are doing. It makes their project more valuable. And that we're going to make it so easy for them to accomplish what they need to accomplish to fulfill the requirements of the Public Art Ordinance. And then, if they qualify, if their project is over $300,000, they get a booklet, which we've worked very hard on, which is the Public Art Guidelines for Private Developers, and it lays everything out. And now, on the cover of this is a statement which requires developers to sign this saying that they have received this packet. So, in the future, we won't get, "I didn't know there was a public art requirement." And that, of course, has happened. All right. So, this is all exciting stuff. This is all really positive, wonderful stuff. Future, we have some money in our Public Arts Fund. And we're very excited to be able to begin the process of looking at what we can do as a city, as your commission, to install a piece of public art. And we have a lot of questions. We have a lot of questions such as, are we bound to do this only on public property? Are we allowed to approach someone with a private parcel and ask if we can use that space? Because, quite frankly, there aren't a lot of public spots left in Ojai for public art. So, we're looking at all of that. And this is a time-consuming process. And we don't like to rush it. We're going to go one step at a time and make sure that we're doing it right and something that the public will benefit from. We are also, well, this is also on, this is kind of the back burner, but I've had this in mind for a long time, as have many others. And that is to put together a public art tour that would complement the tours that are given by the museum. Once again, that coordination with the museum. They give a tour of Ojai. We want to give a tour of the public art zones in Ojai. What I have found in the past couple of years is that a lot of people don't know just how much public art there is here in this town. And so, I'm very excited to work on that. What else? I think that might be it, unless, Chair Addison, if you would like me, I did prepare some, a little paragraph here to help the commission understand our request about working on the Public Art Ordinance. Would you want me to do that now and have a segue?
We'll come to that in its order on the agenda.
I have a question for our force of nature, Christine. Along with all the rest of you, I mean, the legacy all of you establish for ongoing for the city is just remarkable, you know. But you are fairly dogged and I love it. A project I'm a little concerned has slipped through the cracks. Money allocated by the City Council for a piece of public art on city property, the gates at the museum. That was a public art project as appropriated by the City Council.
The what museum?
The gates at the museum.
Oh, that's not part of the commission.
That was actually allocated to the museum.
Right. It was allocated to the museum. But what I'm concerned about is that it's, I'm raising the issue because it is public art.
It is.
Absolutely.
On public land, on city land. It is public art.
And it is-
I'm not sure, I think Christine might, the project might help with Christine's involvement. I don't know why you wouldn't be, since it is appropriation for public art on a public facility. What is the difference between that, actually, and the public art in the playground?
Well, I'm going to-
In terms of being involved?
Try to answer that. But this, of course, is off the top of my head.
And one of the reasons I raise this issue is I think it's kind of fallen through the cracks. For example, I was told by someone directly that a city staff person, that was, told them they were surprised it was being funded by the city. You know, there's been some twixt cup and lip issues here, I think.
Well, first of all, I do not know who's funding arches, the arches that are being built on museum. What I do know-
You don't know what?
You're talking about the arches at the museum?
The gates.
The gate, the gate. I call them arches. The gate, as I've seen the design for it from Doug Lochner. I probably want to turn most of these comments over to Roger because I think Roger knows a little bit more about this than I do. But I will say that it is a museum-run idea to put gates on. I believe it was in response to vandalism-
Right.
-that occurred at the museum.
Right.
And by the museum doing it in their own, as an entity and not the city, they were able to use an artist that they would not have been able to use had the city been, had the Arts Commission been in charge of it. Because we have some restrictions on how often we use an artist.
Okay.
Yeah. That particular project, Wendy Barker, our executive director of the museum, and originally, it came about because of some vandalism that we had at the museum.
Yeah, I know the background, yes.
Right. And so, we decided with the police department that it would be good to have gates. And so, it was presented to the City Council and the City Council put money aside for doing that. So, it didn't really go through the Arts Commission as such.
All I'm saying is that the money was appropriated specifically to create a piece of public art.
Yeah. And it is public art, but it didn't come through the budget of the Arts Commission. So, yeah.
I just wanted to raise, it's been a long delayed and-
Well, and we're also having problems. The design that Doug Lochner came up with was rejected by the Historic Preservation Commission.
I understand that. And that was also a question of mine of why that wouldn't, proposal wouldn't have come to the Arts Commission.
Yeah. I think that's an oversight that it didn't, so that the Arts Commission could have given their support to it.
But it would have been the logical first step to me.
Right. Yeah. I think the museum didn't anticipate that the Historic Preservation people wouldn't like it. And so-
I just, I'd like to get your input as a councilperson on that project.
Right.
That's just my personal feeling.
Okay.
And I think the point is, is that that money came out of the Public Arts Fund.
No, no. No, there's no, I do not know how it's being funded, but I can tell you that it is not being funded.
It came out of the general fund, okay. But it was being funded by the city as a piece of public art?
Yes.
Is that so? I didn't know that.
Yes. No, that's why I raise the issue to clarify that it was specifically appropriated for creating a piece of public art.
May I ask, may I ask you a question?
Can I have your attention just a second? Time is running out on us. I don't know how far through your agenda you-
We have a few more important items. And I think Councilmember Haney had a question.
So, I had one question regarding the Public Arts Maintenance Agreement. If a developer places a piece of public art, at what length of time is he or she or they responsible for maintaining it? And then, at what point in time does that public art become ours and that we are the sole maintenance operator of it? Is there something in our agreement with that?
There is language in the ordinance that has to do with maintenance. And if we really are running out of time, the Public Art Ordinance item on this is critical because we need your permission to go forward on something. And we were told that we could get that tonight. So, I would, if it's all right with you, I would hope that we have enough time to get to that item.
We have about 10 minutes because we have to reset up the council chambers.
I can show you in the ordinance.
I'm just asking, do we have something?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay. So, let's move on then to the next two items on the agenda that are important to us before we get back to the Public Arts Committee. The first of which is we understand there's a movement to reduce the size of the commissions. And we strongly urge you to allow the Arts Commission, regardless of what you do to others, to remain as a seven-member commission. As you can see, we are active in what we do. All of our committees are deeply engaged and we try and spread the load, but it's a significant load. So, we strongly advocate the seven-member commission. The other question that we had is really just a matter of clarification. The Commissioner's Handbook says that each year, the commission will elect a new chair. Does new mean different or does it just mean a new chair as opposed to the chair that is currently in place? And that's the question that we would like clarified.
All we could give is personal opinions.
Right.
My personal opinion is it's important to have the election. I don't really care if, I mean, if there's a confidence with someone, reelect them. But I should have the election once a year. It's my personal opinion.
That we are quite comfortable with.
Single councilperson opinion.
I remember clearly when I was on the Reckon Parks Commission that I was chair for two years and then I asked for an additional two years and was given that honor. So, I think it's just for the new year, not necessarily a new person.
Thank you.
Expressing personal opinion, I would agree that the election is important every year. But I also would suggest that maybe after two years, someone else be brought in and kind of trained as we rotate, because a lot of organizations come to rely heavily on just one person. And sometimes that person would like to get out of it, but doesn't, it feels like they're shirking their duty. So, it could be a combination of both the election and an encouragement of a rotation at some point.
Thanks. So, we can devote the remaining time that we have to the questions that Christine has about the Public Art Ordinance.
Yes. So, this is on your agenda because the Public Art Committee would like, and the commission would like your permission to revisit the ordinance. Now, this is the ordinance that you adopted in 2014. So, it's anew over the first ordinance. And what happened was there were about two year, well, maybe one year, when nothing much was going on in the area of public art. And then, boom, things just started to pop. And so, this new 2014 ordinance, we had a run-through with it. And what we have found is, is that in many cases, the language of the ordinance needs to be clarified, defined, strengthened. In some cases, it's the interpretation of ordinance language is not in keeping, interpretation by council is not in keeping with the intention of the ordinance writers. The ordinance writers wrote it so that it would assure Ojai's public art program flourishes and does not get bogged down or even sidestepped due to interpretations of what it is that the ordinance is saying. But we have run into barriers to proceeding and going forward. One just has come up recently, out of the blue, that an interpretation of the ordinance is going to shut down one of the most critical processes that that ordinance alludes to. So, we would like to go back and we would like to go through the ordinance step by step, not to change it, but to modify it, to strengthen it, and to clarify it so that when we ask a question and it goes back to council, the answer that comes back to us as to what we may or may not do is in keeping with the intention of the ordinance. That is not the case now. I'll give you just a couple of examples. The tricky business of building valuation is just not written clear, clearly. It says one thing in one part, something else somewhere else. I see Steve nodding his head over here. He knows this well because he and I worked on this a lot in the past. Another has to do with the timing. When exactly do things have to be finished? What are we holding over a developer's head in terms of building permits? What if there is no building permit, for example, Ojai Valley Athletic Club? Well, they're using the parking lot that they built with the solar panels, but they have not completed their deal with the art, Public Art Committee, with the Arts Commission, the Public Art Ordinance at this point. So, all of these things we think could be clarified and strengthened by taking another look at this ordinance. We also have invited Susan Amon to sit on this committee with Roger and Michael and Amber and Kathleen Wald, so that we have one of the drafters of the 2014 ordinance with us at the table. So, we don't inadvertently change something and end up with an even worse problem. So, that's what we're asking for.
Yes, that really concludes our presentation. But questions and comments, obviously, please.
Yeah, sure. If it's real quickly.
I would just caution that we have established a protocol for commissions. If they want to, you know, you're always welcome to make suggestions for ordinance changes. But to do it in basically like a term sheet or bullets of what you want changed and then get our concurrence before you fully engage the city attorney in ordinance development. And that's just to manage the city's attorney's time properly. So, have a meeting, discuss what you want changed, bring it to us, we endorse it, then it goes to city attorney. That's been our protocol.
So, we may go forward and work on the ordinance because I was told we couldn't do that without a permission from City Council.
The distinction is you're always free to make recommendations to us for ordinance changes. But engaging the city attorney in ordinance drafted language is a different thing.
Okay. Well, we weren't wanting to-
So, get your bullet list to us and we'll endorse it and then he can engage. Just to make the point plain, I haven't spent any effort on this and won't until the council directs me to do so.
Right.
That's the point. Just get something to us to say yes to and then-
Yes. We had not included talking with the attorney.
Right. I think that would be beneficial to us is here's the current language. Here's what you think is wrong with the current language. If we agree, then we're going to direct you, direct it to the city attorney to do a modification of the ordinance and then go through the whole process that that takes.
Exactly. Fair enough.
Great. So, we may go ahead and meet and work on it.
Please.
Okay.
Basically, you're being invited to suggest where the problems are in new language. But as far as what the intent and the interpretation, then-
But as far as what the intent and the interpretation, then that comes back to the council.
Fabulous.
And I would concur with Paul and Bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good point. Okay. We'll call the meeting to a close because we now need to change the set.